They're working virtually into the digital world, just not getting them doing it. So we still need you to talk out here for the record later. We kind of turn off everything a couple times.
Did it scare you?
The video I think is unworking, I can change this stuff for a second. You need to shift to where that's not. If anyone wants to have public comments. The mic is on, talk into it. We won't be able to hear you, but the people online and the record will hear you. That's more than we're going to do. I mean, that's what gets me. Do you not have a TV on at all right now?
Yeah, there's nothing on.
Is there anything to be shown this evening?
No.
All right, so once you shifted to them. We're good to go.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:07. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Vice Mayor Wheeler.
Thank you. There's nothing to report out on closed session. Do we have any conflict of interest declarations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do with the. Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I do with the lighting and landscape district, Zone One.
And I am the same in the Vintage Meadows District. Any changes or deletions to the agenda? David?
Mayor, no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Public comments? Any person wishing to speak on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Mr. Frankston, how are you?
Good evening, council members. Daniel Frankston, Cloverdale Wellness. I'm here tonight to talk about taxes, but we're going to change it up a little bit and not talk about sales tax. Instead, what I'd like to talk about is cannabis tax, specifically the cannabis excise tax. I don't know if the council members are aware, but the state has its notions on raising the cannabis sales tax 4% beginning the beginning of next year to a total of 19%. We currently pay 27% in taxes. That's eight and a half sales tax, three and a half excise tax to the city, which we're very pleased to pay, 15% to the state, and that comes out to 27%. Starting September 1st, that figure will rise to 27 and a quarter percent because Prop H will take effect. There is a proposed county tax on the ballot for childcare that is a quarter cent. There is a proposal, there's not yet, there is soon to be a proposed Cloverdale sales tax, which appears to be at three quarters of a cent. And with the proposed 4% state excise tax, that would put our tax obligation at 32 and a quarter percent. We would like assistance from the city. There are six cannabis businesses in town, only three of which are subject to the excise tax because that only applies to retail. So the two dispensaries and the delivery service would be affected. Currently cannabis sales in California are down about 20% from two years ago. The sales in Michigan, which started years after us and which has a population of a quarter of what California, now exceeds California as far as revenues generated. They started in March, they now exceed California. A lot of this reason for the price decrease is because the price of cannabis has gone down, and that's a good thing. I mean, we want to see cannabis to be affordable. I have no objection to that. A big part of the decrease, though, is on account of the black market. I believe that the ad hoc I had indicated that we were about 60%, 40% black market, 60% legal market, and that has regressed. It's now less than half of the sales in California are to lawful dispensaries. And we would very much like to see the city take a piece, help us in trying to get the state to back down from their 4%. I think it's in everyone's best interest. It would put us in a position to maybe pay a little bit more city excise tax if we don't have to pay 4% on the sales tax. 15% of the dispensaries in California have closed down. Another over a quarter of percent, a quarter of the existing owe taxes, whether excise or sales tax. So we're in a bit of a crisis mode in the cannabis industry, and I think this is just not the right time for the state to be increasing the tax. And so what I intend to do is to generate a letter from the six cannabis companies here in Cloverdale to the city urging you to get with the state and urge them not to increase that tax. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public that'd like to make a comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move on. We have no student liaison. What is the correspondence that we have? David, do you want to talk about any of the written correspondences that were sent in?
Mayor, there are five separate correspondence in your packet. I don't want to necessarily walk through either of those, I just want to call out that we've received correspondence. One is in regards to survey results, particularly focused on our parks, communication from Mr. Kozlowski in regards to property taxes, correspondence from Mr. Frankston who just spoke, as well as correspondence from Ms. Thomas about vacant property located on Port Circle.
Next thing we have is our consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests an item be removed and considered separately. Does anyone up here want to pull an item? Does anyone in the audience want to pull an item? Seeing none.
I'll move the item.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Bagby, second by Councilmember Walter.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes, and Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Wheeler being absent.
Wheeler. And so it passes 4-0. Thank you. Forgot his last name right there. All right, moving into public hearings. H1, consider resolution establishing and updating the schedule of fees and charges for city services and repealing previously adopted and conflicting fees and charges for such services. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Included in your packet is what's referred to as a master fee schedule. I just want to remind council that anytime you change fees, like it's being proposed tonight, it is a public hearing, so I encourage council to, you know, open the public hearing after the, after staff's presentation. This is really part of our annual process. Typically in late June or early July, we bring forward an updated fee schedule to adjust fees to address the cost of providing city services. All of our fees are based solely on cost recovery. The fees that were proposed for the master fee schedule for the next fiscal year were adjusted based on the Consumer Price Index, and there were some other minor adjustments. With that, I'll turn it over to our finance director to just give you a brief, a brief overview of the schedule itself and any changes.
Perfect, thank you, David. So I'll just kind of walk through, the majority of the, of the changes were 3%. There was, we made no changes to the annual cannabis fees. We did increase the deposit amount for the cannabis audit from 6,000 to 10,000. That's because the costs went up to $10,000 each. We're gonna, we made it a deposit this year instead of a fee, hoping that we can find a cheaper solution or a less expensive solution because we know that $10,000 per financial audit is, is a lot, but that's what we're being charged, so that's, and this is cost recovery, so that's how we went about it. The other things I wanted to mention was that we added a mobile home rent increase application. We, we added a deposit for $10,000, that's a new fee. Cemetery burials, we did add one hour of admin expense, that was never included, and that is a lot of the work that's being done is administrative, so we did add that to two of the cemetery burials. And then we also added a backflow certification fee. It's a new fee, it's if you don't get your backflow checked and you're supposed, you're supposed to and you don't, and we have to go out, then we're going to charge you a minimum of $150 and then plus any other costs that are associated with it. Those are the major changes. There was one other minor change in that we changed a public works employee from one person to another, and so it changed, it actually made no difference. So the, the change in the person decreased the cost, but you don't see any difference
Great, thank you. Bring it to the council. Any comments or questions, concerns? Same. Bring it to the public. Anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns? Great, we'll bring it back to the dice. Anyone want to make a motion? You have to read it, it's a resolution. Right? I will do it if no one else will. Thank you.
I'm happy to read the resolution by title only, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale, establishing and updating the schedule of fees and changes for city services and repealing previously adopted and conflicting fees and charges for such services.
Second.
I second that.
Thank you.
Councilman, whoa, sorry. For the speaker. Councilmember Bagby?
You looking for me? Yeah. Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler being absent.
Passes 4-0, thank you. Moving into H2, Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, public hearing, approval of the annual engineer's report and resolutions authorizing assessments for fiscal year 24-25.
I believe we have Paul Wade on the line to go through and go through his engineer's report showing any changes that we're suggesting being made, but again, this is an annual thing that we do every year. This is the public hearing portion of it. You've already seen two presentations, or you've already been presented this twice. And what we do is we go through the budget, we figure out how much it costs to provide the services, and then with the help of Coastland, they tell us how much each assessment should be in each of the individual zones. So with that, I would turn it over to Paul Wade, maybe. Oh, yeah, I see him.
Down here. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Happy to give you a brief.
Paul, we can't hear you. Give, is your, are you muted? I can't see your screen.
No, I'm not muted.
We're going to have more technical difficulties. Paul, can you try to talk one more time?
Yeah, I'm talking now, can you hear me?
Nope, nothing.
No.
Sorry, Paul, give it, give us one second, we've had difficulties all evening. Try one more time?
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yes, we can hear you, and I can turn them up. Go ahead and talk, Paul.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm glad to give you a brief presentation on this, if you like, whatever your pleasure is, or if you just want to move to the resolutions and put in a public hearing. The pleasure of the council.
All right, let's, we'll go around and ask if we have any questions on any of these. Let's start with if we don't mind. Can we do resolutions three, four, five, six, and seven probably right out the gate because Council, Vice Mayor Wheeler is not here? It would be attachment four and attachment five.
It is a public hearing, excuse me.
Yep. Anything from anyone here? All right, we'll open it up to the public at 6:21. Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns, complaints? We'll give it a little bit of time. All right, no movement, we will close the public hearing and move into this. Start with attachment four, Zone Three. Does anyone like to read the resolution?
I'm happy to read the resolution.
All right, I will.
A resolution approving the annual engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 24, 2024 through 2025 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone Three, and that is attachment four.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Once again, since it's specific to this zone, I will ask if there's any public comment on it. Seeing none, Michael. Are we good with that, Alex? Making sure.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler absent.
Passes 4-0. We'll move into attachment five, which is Zones Four, Five, Six, and Seven. I'll open it up to the public as a, any public comment? If you don't need to read this resolution, give you a break. All right, I'll, resolution approving the annual engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2024-25 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zones Four, Five, Six, and Seven pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. Do we have a second?
A second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler is absent.
Passes 4-0. Councilmember Walter, we will do your zone, which is Zone One, Attachment Two. Any public comment for Zone One, which is Jefferson Springs? All right, I'll move the resolution to a resolution approving the annual engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts and authorizing levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2024-25 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone One pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
And Councilmember Walter abstaining, and Vice Mayor Wheeler absent.
Thank you. All right, and I am Zone Two, the last one, Attachment Three. Councilmember, I'm, I'll recuse myself at this point, and Councilmember Bagby, could you help us one?
Going to go to Attachment Three. Is there any public comment? Anything from council? I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain your motion, so if you could read Attachment.
Oh, okay. A resolution approving the annual engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2024 to 25 for the Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District for Zone One pursuant to, to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
That was for Zone Two?
Oh, for Zone Two.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Actually, do we need a roll call in this?
Yeah.
Really, we don't, actually.
Say, we're just the three of you, it's.
It is, it's just the three of us, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes.
Mayor Lance returning to the day is at 6:26.
Thank you. All right, any reports from subcommittees? Anyone who has? Seeing none, all subcommittee agendas approved minutes immediately available at www.cloverdale.net/AgendaCenter. Any members from the council member, or council member reports?
I did submit mine in writing.
It's uploaded, it's not in your.
It's uploading.
If you refresh your.
We can go ahead and refresh that, yeah. And I'll just comment that actually we had a really great event at Smart. It was very well attended. It was the groundbreaking for an essential segment of Smart that will connect Santa Rosa and Aurora Park at Andy's Memorial Park in the Moore Park neighborhood of Santa Rosa. It was, it was widely agreed that it was one of the best groundbreaking and best events, most well-attended events. We had Andy Fromeer, who is the head of Metropolitan Transit Commission, come and speak wearing a Smart hat, which we're all very excited to see. I got a chance to introduce Senator McGuire, and this is just going to be a wonderful part of the completion of the multimodal trail in Sonoma County, and it's just going to be a really important part of, you know, tying communities together, and it just, it's a, it's something that we're going to be able to see come farther and farther north. I'm really excited about the groundbreaking that, or the, the celebration of the opening of the Windsor Station in 2025, and of course, we are partially funded to Healdsburg, so the train and the multimodal trail are coming north, and they're already making huge impacts in people's lives. We're seeing that at the Foss Creek St. Trail in Healdsburg and, you know, on the multimodal trail pieces that are, have already been opened by Smart, and the folks in the Moore Park neighborhood were just thrilled to have us and thrilled to be on that multimodal trail because that is a neighborhood that has been long neglected by, by folks in Sonoma County and Santa Rosa, and they're just very excited that they're not going to have to get in their cars, they'll be able to walk and bike with their kids to, to shops, to stores, to go to other parks, and it's just kind of a preview of things to come for North County as well. So that was just a really exciting day, and again, a kind of a preview of what hopefully we'll see here in North County in a couple of years.
Anyone else? Nope.
I want to make sure that we thank CAL FIRE and Sonoma County Fire District personally, along with the 15 strike teams, everyone in the area, all of the private aerial dumps, all the helicopters, that's all private, privatized, and all these people that keep us safe. We had an early fire season, it started out, and they got that into control really fast, and because of their actions, Healdsburg is safe. Because of the direction, we pretty much always were, but it's still, it was a good test to see the evacuation process and to see how Cloverdale reacted. Our own staff was phenomenal, they were always there making sure, keeping updates going. Chief, I know you were on hand quite a bit, and so I thank you all personally for protecting our communities at all times.
Yeah, I'll just add, it was really great updates from the staff, you know, just getting that email from, from Derek saying aircraft is at Cloverdale Airport, and they're using that, that gasoline, that, that tank there that we have invested in, so, you know, that is an essential part of our regional and local public safety. I'd also want to, you know, thank CAL FIRE, our firefighters who might be listening, the, the fire at Preston and Geysers just this week, it was at my house or probably anybody who lives out in that direction, it was kind of like an airshow, like less fun, but it was impressive, the speed and the, the, how impactful the multi-aircrafts, multiple aircraft types, they attacked that fire, you know, like, with incredible speed, and it was, it was impressive. I mean, even building through so many fires and so many close calls that we have, you could just tell it was, it was a quick response, it was a professional response, it was targeted, it was surgical, and they were just really on top of their game. So we all, you know, we all owe them our gratitude.
All right, we'll move on to legislative reports, supports of, support or opposition?
Thank you, Mayor. Included in your packet is a letter of support, signed by Mayor Lance for AB 1359. This, this legislation is being proposed to address who's the lead agency under SEQA with respect to geothermal projects currently in state law. The Geological Energy Management Division, or otherwise known as CALGEM, is the lead agency under SEQA. The proposed bill would intend to put the, a local lead agency or a local entity who has land use authority as the, as the lead agency under SEQA. So it doesn't weaken SEQA at all, it just acknowledges that the, the lead agency, the local lead agency is the appropriate entity to be responsible for addressing local environmental issues under SEQA, and this is consistent with the position that council has taken in the past, and as such, the mayor was authorized to, to sign this letter.
Thank you, David. Move on to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for your thoughtful comments regarding CAL FIRE. I just want to do kind of a plug for a particular app that most of us can have on our phones. It's a very useful tool called WatchDuty. If you don't have that, I encourage you to, to download that to members of our community because they're really linked in very tightly with all the incident command reports, so you can get pretty, pretty close to real-time updates on the responses to fires, and you get, you can also get, you know, immediate notifications, so it's a, it's a, it's a very helpful tool. Secondly, just want to report that we received news today, kind of unfortunate that the, we were not awarded the praise grant that we applied for with Department of Transportation. We know that it's a very competitive grant, and the, the Department of Transportation is going to be issuing a new, a new funding round fairly quickly. Our intent is to debrief on our existing grant application, see what they determined if were any weaknesses, and consider reapplying because we, we do believe we've put together a really strong competitive application. Just know that the, the, the fund, the available funding outstrip, wasn't, wasn't enough to cover all of the proposals that were submitted, so again, we'll, we'll keep trying, I think it's, it's a valuable exercise. And then on a personal note, I will be out of the office this, tomorrow and this weekend, and Kevin Thompson will be acting city manager in my, in my absence.
David, just a quick question with respect to the grant that we, we did not receive. Was there a reason why?
There's been no reason provided.
Will they?
That, that, one of the things the Department of Transportation does is allow applicants to, to do a debrief, and we'll, we'll work on getting that scheduled with both Smart and Sonoma County to better understand, you know, why we, we didn't meet the cut. County to better understand, you know, why we didn't meet the cut. But there was no, really what we received today was just the announcement of who was awarded, not any feedback on why our grant application was not.
I was kind of hopeful because I know they called you on the phone, right, to talk?
They did.
Yeah, and I thought that was a good sign, but apparently not. I'd just like the report back on why we weren't receiving that grant.
Absolutely.
And for the public information, the RAISE grant was the one that we partnered with Sonoma County and with SMART for an application process. We had all put in last year and didn't get it, so we teamed up together this year, and once again, so. Did you have some?
You know, I, I think that, just having reviewed that grant, it was absolutely exemplary, and it was really a team effort. This is just one round of many, and they're, they're highly competitive grants, but the deep work that went into it from Joanne Parker and from Adrian Venoni and from City Manager Kelly and so many, and members of their teams and members of Sonoma County Transportation and Public Works, that's not going to be wasted. So much of the deep dive into the interconnectedness of our streets, our multimodal plans, our, the county's active transportation plan, the future of SMART, the Great Redwood Trail, that is an ongoing process, and it really does position us for going out for the grant again, because I think it's a very worthy project, and it's exactly the kind of project that, that the federal government is looking for. It's multimodal, it's multi-jurisdictional, and it ties so much of air quality, quality of life, traffic safety, it ties those priorities together. So I think the quality of the work that was done is really going to position us well going forward for not just reapplying, for the RAISE grant and building on what was put together, but also going out for, for other area grants. So I don't think it was a waste of time. It also brought people together who I'm not sure I had all met, and from different backgrounds and different agencies, and that's always a, that's always a good thing. We'll get them next time.
And the permanent bridge, that was really important.
So the county's portion of the RAISE grant was going to go towards the Asti Bridge?
That is, that is crucial for fire safety for our entire region, and there probably are other sources of funding that they'll go after in the meantime, but yeah, the team that was created to put it together was incredibly impressive, and I think will be successful in, in other areas.
David?
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney report?
Yeah, just very quickly, I mentioned last time we're planning AB 1234 Ethics Training. We're looking probably at July 17th, which is off Wednesday for a special meeting for that training, which would be 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It's a mandatory two-hour training, but we tried to go a little, a little fast, see if we can shave off some time.
As exciting as that would be, I do have a SMART board meeting, so I may have to do it online or elsewhere, so.
We can.
I know, I'll be missing the donuts and I'll, you know, miss your company, Alex, but I'm going to have to miss that one.
We'll see if we can change it.
Yeah.
Technically, I don't think it'd be good to speed through it either.
What, 6:00 AM at night? Yeah, not, not, sorry if I said AM, PM. We'll coordinate, too. We hadn't checked with the building if they're available, so we'll try to find the date that works for everyone.
Thank you. Direction on future agenda items? Anything? Seeing none? All right, we'll adjourn at 6:38.